We're gonna run the school this whole year. You got me in your pencil?
Yeah, no, not at all. She's doing a great job. We had our first I L T V today. It's interesting. Oh, where's your room?
Down on the left.
So are you excited?
I'm so thrilled beyond. Well, I just got all moved in. Boxes are still there, but...
So who babysits the dogs through the day?
They babysit themselves.
Outside or inside?
Depends. Today I left them inside.
So hot and...
There's a nice sort of run on the side of the house. They bothered the neighbors. No, if you're more... A week or two to rest and then we can go see the sites.
Big sites a little?
Yeah, I just have... Next to me, it was fine. Moving this stuff and moving in the heat.
Yes, yes.
Driving.
You've been going back and forth.
I'm like a rubber on down.
I'm asking any questions.
You know how I got it? From just resting my arms while driving so much.
Yeah, he's sticking to it. That's the story, he's sticking to it. Do you guys both have your reports with you or do you need a copy?
Does he know each other?
Uh, no. He said Loda High.
He wore his colors though, so he could be a... Instant friends.
That was her first couple days.
Pretty good. First one I thought.
What did you think of us?
Yeah, seriously.
What grade are you?
Huh?
What grade are you?
Senior. Well, I was expecting like classes. Like people who don't... No friends, uh... All my friends are not.
That works.
Hi guys.
How are you?
Good evening.
Very excited to meet you.
First night for you guys, huh?
Well, I've been to one last year.
Good. You're a pro.
If you guys leave your suits in the car, you're gonna change it.
You're gonna choke on that one now.
We're saying that's a special meeting.
The board loves you guys, so you're great.
Can you go to John's stuff?
No, I don't.
So you're gonna address the president's members of the board.
Yeah.
And then you can say whatever you want to say after.
Reading from a script or do you have it?
Oh, we have just a summer report. It's like blogs that we just... So you're the CBO for Loda?
So they don't. Um, I grew up back east in Virginia.
So I think that rules have been there for two years.
Did you figure them?
Do you have an idea? Because policy right. But what is... Remember we tried to change it one way and then the...
It's a great district.
No, exactly how it meant to us, I changed it, but I haven't changed it. And then we caught it. So he said this year, our P E teacher worked out it. Oh no, they gotta try to do this.
Where are you guys?
She's got a P E one.
And they never...
When it first came out, I just had it. On the final reading from sign.
I hope we... Sign ever was had it until the end, it's why would I? And then the other one, I hear some might be the...
I had a couple of them this year. Yeah, she finished her two years and then she got into men's school right away. The other one was just... It's definitely, it's definitely a great thing.
Like M V and then M V A. Do you want to move it?
Um, yeah, exactly.
Maybe maybe not.
In New York?
My dumb face.
Teaching them all about it.
I'll be right here.
But we're gonna lose you. You might get lost back there.
I waited in the car till I got here. Get out.
It's like a hundred and sixty degrees out there in the car.
Yeah, we're in the car.
The windows are down.
Now you guys have to do really well if the neighbors are watching.
Changed a lot.
Well, there was one to be here.
Investment banking.
Right, I know we do. You set that precedent right. You know, train, she's a turn to...
We can take her, right?
Yeah.
She's a Georgia.
She's the head counselor. The only counselor.
Who passed the house with ass.
For adults.
I guess we're as worried as Ken.
Please like show me your house.
He's pretty thorough, smart. There's a lot of thought.
I heard he stepped back and he was helping with the placement of the kids taking the tags and all that.
He said, here's your issue, here's my guy. I said, okay. It works.
Not in Y U.
Um, I heard that...
It's good. It's done on top of it. It has the sun on it, it's good. I didn't, I didn't... I didn't know.
It's easy to make a ton of money when markets are...
We did. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you today, so.
Good, how are you doing? That's for sure, big school then. Uh, it's been, it's been fun. Good, good. Yeah, so my... He's a senior.
So you've met. Marcy Lewis.
Yes.
This is Melanie.
I know.
She's our A S U treasurer.
That's what your dad does.
She's the vice presidency.
They're usually, the bigger, um, those are the offices they're producing.
These, the four on the end are also managed.
They're producing.
If that wasn't the case.
Well, because like, have your T A? We cannot bend three curriculums.
If you're gonna do rate quick, then we just might. Be like, no, no.
It's all math.
Two first teachers. They might be the same teacher.
It's rough.
Yeah, you can go either way, high or low.
Sometimes they're the same kid, the same... So what was your major goal?
How do you think you should do it?
Really? So you were... Easily faced with the future. I thought it was cool. All the most... Like, oh yeah. Just not so much. It was nice, it was more nice than it was. I don't like, I don't mind like a Wednesday for the short week.
I think it was like a soft brag.
That's what the... They're pretty serious. And of course, half of the days. She had kids, it was similar again for the house. The last she saw all of her kids for fifteen minutes. I understand more, I would have wanted to see them.
Very true. Yeah, well, I apologize. That's the first day of school. Trying to do what you can.
Yeah. Kissing them. Everybody.
Last year's the first year we had school. We had a... It was cheesy to work. Nobody fun? I never trust that in my apartment at home. Fine, fine, I live... Yeah, I have to say, speakers are pointed around here.
And I just, just the graphics and everything are just... I saw a high chart.
And they come and then I'm...
They're never like that.
There's a letter on one of those.
I mean, it's a good analysis.
Thank you for coming up here. I went and watched Rusty rally to the year before. So we went and kind of picked your brain. You put signatures. Yeah, she runs. Somebody better.
It's all about that. You know, he's got spaceships and he's got cars. I think that thirty thousand tons.
Yeah. Kids don't...
Now he's...
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm pushing.
It's why this price is hard to... Probably several thousand dollars above.
The kids may share.
She's home, she's home.
They're doing their best.
Right.
They're still...
Why do you still want to train home? Will you stop texting me, I'll go home?
What do you think seventeen one? That shows like six fifty eight and that's really not bad.
Kind of setting off your... I can see that, I can see that.
Really?
I mean, I think the last forty two hours.
These sort of... This school, all the wrong material.
Oh my god. I know, we get their hair.
And there's going to learn.
Oh yeah.
And how they go. I tell you, remember where to lean for anything.
They'll start, they'll start.
I, I... I'll send an email about it. I'll be, I'll be one of the things we need. Understand their understanding activities. I think we split them super upstairs, so we can figure it out by Friday. I have... They'll figure it out by Friday. No, uh, so we've done the education, the research, the... I feel this part is...
Unfortunately.
But which are... They're going. How much we sit.
Ryan is just...
Very attached. She's next to me. Okay, let's switch your bed. Now you guys will fill our coordinates.
Somebody's, somebody's got a sneeze.
Everyone's...
We're looking at two sets of twins. And then you're like... You know.
But you have to infer that.
A month ago.
I don't think you'll go.
Well, I learned a couple of tricks. Yes. Parts. Three hours, what do you know?
Got a little... I don't know.
It was...
I will find out. Yeah, I'm that.
That's right, that's right. Just so you're not... Five, one is asking about you.
She said I was...
Base.
Which high school are you?
You're worried you're dealing with something.
It was my admin. I wasn't named for anyone else's. It's hard. But I didn't... Now the guys are over. Now definitely. Also. We'd be taking a point. We have to have another meeting for the O C R with admin and... There to...
I started the same, same. So then maybe you'll be just starting college.
I think a couple more of these.
Oh, let's see, let's see.
I gotta check them.
Yellow technology.
Talking about...
She'll call me. About that.
Now, now that one.
Now doesn't want anything to do with it. He said he's due a hearing.
I'm in a, I'm in a wedding.
Soon.
I'm gonna stop. Start traditionally, be the students who got on the A C P. I don't remember what. I don't know if that's like... Blanket or something. I know.
Maybe it's not.
I'm exhausted.
Yes. In two days. Is it stranger? Welcome back.
Been a while.
It has. How was your summers? Very good. Good, good.
Your pad party, this is not a...
Summer rolls. Ch- ch- chippodines.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. How you doing? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Nice, nice to see you.
Yeah, and then Catherine Flavis, the student rep, said we'd all be here in code and tie.
Look at Mr. Herro, he's dressed for summer too.
And we all are.
He's dressed up.
Or president is dressed for summer, you can dress for summer.
He's hiding the tent too.
There's another reason. The kids might be sleepy. Now they're caught.
Oh Raj, okay, very good.
Nope.
Raj, how are you?
We didn't go outside for after sports.
Yeah, so they were inside.
Stop being quiet, but you forget how much training them in here. And it's first grade and so...
You're still your stuff.
At their first year of being all day long.
There've been a lot of computer changes too, so there have been a lot of things where it's like... You work at Seacoast. And it doesn't work.
Nice to be here.
You know, I have one. Funding and charter is low on the priority. Oh, does someone know where the magic lights go? I have a six for you now, which is very good to find out that you have... So mad about it. All kind of me. It was in my pocket that we were... Actually, very much so. I think my first is... On Thursday, so it was super easy. Three words, three times. My second grade against, it was great. It was somebody's birthday, we got cut my names. And we have no... Yes. That's really all they had.
All right, good to see you. Kayla, Coach, and Teacher, Detective, and Dr. Racker. McNair, uh, Government. I'm gonna be here.
Oh, hi. I'm always listening. Uh, Michelle. All the, all the... They're all at C J, some of them are at...
I've got my, uh, you guys. What could happen?
No, Michelle's been working.
Oh, yeah, she's in Boston, she's in UCLA, she's...
We were at Boston for N D A R A, I was there. One work twelve hour, welcome to the twelve hour.
And away we go. I got to it. No, from my angle, it's from all the... Library orders. Did you, did you put in work order? Tell them to get a work order. What did you say? That is better, it is better than what it was last time.
Yeah, it's all letters. At the angle I'm looking at.
Technology is your friend. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene, uh, our meeting of the Loda Unified School District Board of Education, uh, August first, two thousand seventeen. And roll call would show all seven members present. If you would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our United Nations is alive, of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I, uh, re... Before... Before I, uh, report on items from closed session, I'd like to welcome, uh, our student representatives. Uh, we have Raj from Bear Peak High School and Philippe from, uh, Philippe A. from Loda High School. I knew I was gonna do that. Welcome to you. And also, this is our very first, uh, public meeting with our new C B O, Mr. Leonard Khan. So welcome, everyone. Uh, also, I hear there is a, um... There are students from McNair that are kind of watching the proceedings. Can you stand up and wave and introduce yourselves? Oh my goodness, look at that. Go ahead, please.
I'm Alexis, I'm McNair's senior class president. Nice to meet you guys.
I'm Brenda, I'm McNair's senior vice president.
I'm Melissa, and I'm McNair's co-ice B president.
I'm Melanie, I'm A F P treasurer.
Um, I'm Marcy Alou, and I'm McNair's A S E co-president.
Very good, thank you, welcome to you. Uh, general, there'll be a time later on, because we're gonna want to get to know you a little bit. And, uh, seeing as how it's beginning in school, and there probably isn't a lot of things to report on what you have done, but you can report a little bit on yourselves and what's coming up ahead at your schools. And that's a little bit farther on in the agenda. Thank you for coming. So, um, to, uh, report on actions from... So, um, to, uh, report on actions from closed session. Anticipated litigation, Daryl Pollock in motion. Gary Connect said second, and the board voted to reject claim 541161 by the following vote. Seven oh approved. Anticipated litigation also, Daryl Pollock in motion. George Neely second, and the board voted to reject claim 541078 by the vote of seven ayes, zero noes. Also, on conference with real estate property negotiators, Daryl Pollock in motion. Gary Connect said second to instruct the district negotiators to negotiate the price and terms of payment for the purchase of the identified property located at 880 North Guild Avenue in Loda by the following vote, ayes, seven, noes, zero. Okay. Dr. Washer, if you would, please give us your.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I also want to welcome Leonard Khan to his first board meeting and to the district. He had a honeymoon period of about forty-five minutes. So we threw him in right away, and it's, it was like he had been here a long time. So we greatly appreciate him and are happy that he's here with us. I want to show you a little, it's about a two-minute video. We talked about, um, our new inclusion films project on kindness with Joey Tribolta. This will give you a little taste of what it would be like.
We're gonna run a contest, and people are gonna submit stories about their acts of kindness. What we're gonna do together as a group is come up with what that contest is.
We'll have a one to a one-half minute, all the service and everything. And then we have this music video that we're gonna be doing. Uh, it's really, really exciting. The song is fabulous.
Yeah, we can change the world.
Well, I'm hoping that people take the message to be kind to others.
We're gonna just have to show some, we need to show your heart and relations.
I was most excited about to come Bear Camp to acting.
Inclusion film is a practical film workshop for adults with developmental disabilities, and I like to say different abilities. We each filmed it.
And action?
I'm a janitor. You know, including, and there's a kid that can't be enforced. I go out of my way to give a kid a minute. Next scene, the boy is facing there, and he comes up to me, and I was like. And me and him are janitors. And I come in and see him coming out. I'm, you know, kind of shocked to see him, and we go out and take, and pretty much had a small conversation. And it's easy.
I think it's just really cool, that the idea of taking a young group of people with different abilities and making something that's giving them a voice. They're here, they're doing it, and they get it.
I think my favorite part is probably going to the song.
I know, I can feel a star.
The stories that we pick, we're going to make two to three-minute stories about that realm of natural kindness. And then also help those families for that person, uh, whatever the kindness act might be. We're just trying to create, you know, a kind of a movement of just people being kinder.
And it will all start here in Loda Unified. Um, we will get more information about the actual contest and what that entails, uh, for the ideas about the short movies, and we'll keep you posted on how that's going. Also wanna show you some snapshots of our first day of school. We have pictures from Krista, Westwood, and Silva. Smiling faces all around. Happy to be back. Wanna thank all of our, uh, school site folks for a great start. Um, also want to give credit, kudos to our MNO team for making sure that our schools look nice and are safe and kept up, ready for student, staff, and parents for day one. They always do a great job. Um, you know, we have a lot of schools, a lot of ground to cover, uh, and they do a fabulous job getting ready for school. So thank you to them also. I want to acknowledge the, uh, Michael David Family Foundation once again. They have selected GOT Kids, our nonprofit foundation, to be partial recipients of the Reggae Rome Proceeds, which is always a sold-out and fun event coming up on August 19th. GOT Kids always does very well, thanks to the Michael David Family Foundation. And just to remind you, Casino Night is coming up on October 21st. Coming up pretty quickly at Hutchins Street again. Um, hope to have another fabulous turnout and raise a lot of money for our schools through GOT Kids. And I don't know if you knew it or not, but this is Loda Unified School District's 50th anniversary. So we are in the 50th year of the Unified District, so happy 50th. Thank you.
Final turn. Thank you, Dr. Washer. I appreciate that. I have a little brief announcement. There's recently been a, a loss of one of our teachers within the district. Uh, Beverly Winchester came to Loda Unified School District in July of 2000. She worked as an elementary, uh, teacher, teaching sixth grade on B track at Westwood. She continued teaching sixth grade when Westwood School transitioned, uh, to modify traditional in the calendar year of, uh, 2004. In 2008, uh, Bev accepted an assignment as an instructional coach where she worked until very recently. During that time, Beverly worked to assist elementary teachers with the writing process and English language arts. Uh, Mrs. Ms. Winchester was fifty-four years old. Let's keep, uh, her family in our hearts, please. Okay, um. At this point, we have, uh, comments from the public. And a twenty-minute time period has been set aside for the public to address the board on items not listed on the agenda. Each public speaker shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. You're also welcome to distribute any materials to the board and staff. Uh, however, you should note that due to restrictions imposed by the California Brown Act regarding discussing topics that are not on the agenda, board members may not engage in dialogue about the issues of the product. And I have no cards, so if anyone in the audience would like to come up to the podium and address the board on a non-agenda item, please welcome. Form an orderly line. Okay, very good. We will move on. That brings us up to consent agenda A. Board members, are there any items on consent agenda A you'd like to be, uh, pulled for further consideration? Okay, I would like to pull item A3, please. Uh, members of the public, are there any consent agenda items you would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kratos.
I move to approve the main items for consent agenda A.
Very good. It's been, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, student preferential vote. If you're in favor of this, signify by saying aye. Okay, very good. Bring it back to the board for vote. First official vote. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. And motion passes seven zero. Uh, and just on the, uh, item A3, which is donations to the district. Um, one of the line items I thought was noteworthy, although all of them are greatly appreciated and noteworthy. Um, Dr. Washer had mentioned a couple of things, fundraisers for GOT Kids. And I just wanted to make note that GOT Kids has donated sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents to, uh, schools within our district for various projects. So sixteen thousand, roughly five hundred dollars, is pretty amazing for one organization.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, I too would commend all of our donors, and the grand total, uh, for, uh, tonight's donations was seventy-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-eight and forty dollars. And, uh, that is absolutely amazing. Like, thank all the donors. And with that, I move to approve this item.
I agree. Thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, student preferential vote.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Board members. Motion passes seven oh. They're overloading because of the heat. Alrighty, other action items. Bishop McIllegan.
Mr. President, we have a. Mr. President. Mr. President, we have a, we have a provisional intern permit approval. It's one of those required items that come to you periodically, and we have, uh. Yes. We have four people. Here we go.
There we go.
We have four people, uh, that we are asking for approval for a provisional intern permit.
Alrighty, um, any discussion, board members? Questions? Audience, discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve item OA1-1.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Um, preferential vote, students, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board members.
There's still a junior member.
Motion passing to seven oh. Alright, uh, you're on a roll, Bishop McIllegan. Personal matters.
Mr. President, these are routine personal matters being presented for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve personnel matters.
Thank you. And appreciate the second. Students, you do not vote on personal matters, so bring it to the board to vote. Yes.
Who was the second?
Oh, uh, George Neely. Motion passes seven zero. Communications, first and of course, the most enjoyable, would be student representatives. If you would, please, um, just tell us what's going on at the school, and then after that, we're always interested to see kind of what you are about and what your interests are. So, uh, if somebody would like to go first, jump on in. Raj, go ahead.
President Heverly, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Um, so this is gonna be somewhat concise. I mean, we haven't been in session or in school all that, for that long a period of time, but, uh, we do have a couple of things that we would like to share with you. Um, for under-school activities and programs, uh, Bear Creek High School did its first ever first-day oper- operation, and it's, the purpose was to make the incoming class feel more welcome at Bear Creek, thus eliminate the class divide and the negative stigma that Bear Creek has accumulated over these years. Um, feedback-wise, we did get a, we did get a very good, like, positive feedback. The freshmen did, after speaking with some of them personally, they did agree that this was very beneficial, and we plan to do this on, for every single year. Um, there was a bit of confusion at first, but once we got all that sorted and the kids got where they were supposed to go, it was definitely a day to remember. And you can tell that these students are, have come to Bear Creek, and they're more, they're more comfortable. And that's, that's the big thing, because we understand that eighth grade and jump to ninth grade is, is kind of a large transition. So that's one thing that I'd like to touch on. Um, during, within this first-day operation, included presentations, um, and we had various, like, informational sessions regarding our clubs, Bear Creek. We are, we emphasize diversity a lot. We, as you can tell, our international rally and our various, um, international clubs, it's something that we really take pride in. And so we kind of emphasize that throughout the day, kind of, kind of introduce them to what Bear Creek is about, what Loda Unified School District as a whole can offer to the students that chose to come there. And so that's, that's another big thing that we were very proud of. Um, student government-wise, one of our, one of our Loda Unified School District, uh, school district students actually passed away this summer in a fatal car accident, Malaysia Porter. She was a senior at Bear Creek. Uh, three-sport athlete, just academic, academic genius, to say the least. But she was, um, she was definitely, her presence has definitely missed her on campus. Student government did a very good job of coming together at time of need. Um, nobody was really in session. People came from, away from their vacations and they, from their own personal matters to come together as a community that needed mending. And so we, I kind of commended, commended them for doing that, because they, it was very, it was, it was very, it was a very difficult time. Um. We have very strong and responsible candidates in all positions. Uh, ASB at Bear Creek, I think, is probably one of the strongest classes this year, and we plan to do a lot of stuff, which you guys will be hearing more about this upcoming year. Uh, co-curriculars. We have Helen Lee was a girl state delegate. And she was just, she was just awesome there. She was a senator there. She played a big, um, a big part passing pieces of legislation and things of that matter. Um, myself and another student, Marshall Beltran, were delegates at the 2017 Boy State Program. It was, it was definitely a life-changing experience, uh, some positions. Marshall was, he was a lawyer, a judge. I myself were in those positions. I was also a senator for majority leader, and then somebody actually got impeached, so I became pro temp, and then ultimately, uh, ultimately acting lieutenant governor at one point. But it was definitely, it was definitely a good experience, and, uh, something that I would definitely preach in Bear Creek class to kind of continue. Um, we had one student, Brianna Pobyside. She was, she went to Harvard for a science, for a science, um, program, and she excelled there too, and so we're very proud of our students. Also, Kate Lahera, Louis Catapin, and Brittany Vu graduated the prestigious Decision Medicine Program. And for those of you who don't know, it's one of the most prestigious pre-med programs in San Joaquin County. So we kind of, again, we're taking pride in our students. We want you guys to know that Bear Creek is producing a lot more than we have in the past. Um, upcoming events, we do have a leadership camp, uh, it's August 10th through the 12th, and where we were kind of gonna bond together and kind of set goals for this year, because setting goals is all, obviously, an important part in stuff coming here, so, yeah. That's, uh, that's all I have for you guys. Good stuff.
Great, thank you. If you don't mind, if you can tell us a little bit about yourself, your interests, maybe, uh, what your future plans are, job, career?
Um, so, I am currently a senior at Bear Creek High School. I am, I'm interested in business. Business has definitely caught my eye. Um, investment banking or private equity is viable career option. I was talking to Mr. Khan about that, and we had a great conversation about Wall Street, being along, things of that matter. Um, it's just, I don't know, because I feel as if they're, the youth presence in business is somewhat being decimated by these majors of science and STEM, because there's a large portion of STEM, and kind of, the focus has kind of shifted away from that, and I'm, I'm kind of redirecting the focus towards that. Especially at school, kind of, starting like with some stock market clubs and things like that, trying to get them more used to it, kind of preparing our future for what is to come, because, again, we are, we are going to be running the show pretty soon. Not, not, not until after you guys. But, uh, yeah, it was, um. So, as a college, business administration or economics major, like, a couple of big schools, Harvard, Stanford, but UCLA and USC definitely have my eye as well. So we'll see what happens. I'm really excited to be on this, uh, on the board with you guys. It's quite an honor.
Terrific, sounds good. And that's exactly, uh, kind of the courses that the board is interested in, expanding our business courses, um, because that's kind of life. So, thank you very much for your support. Appreciate it. Uh, Philippe A., go ahead.
That's early. Members of the board and secretary, Dr. Washer. Um, I really don't have enough to report, not a lot of information, but next board meeting, I will have a lot of information.
Great.
Uh, our school activities are programmed. I'm gonna go ahead and go over our first day. Practically the first day for freshmen would be their orientation, which was the Wednesday before the first day of school. Uh, the TRL, uh, Taking Real Leadership, was in charge of that, and they welcomed all the freshmen in. They practically welcomed them around the whole school, teaching, or teaching on what classes are really, like, good for them. Um, I was talking to some of the TRL leaders, and they told me they're extremely excited about this year, and hopefully keeping in touch with all the freshmen, making sure their year at a lot of high schools is amazing. And the TRL leaders are juniors and seniors. So the juniors that are gonna stay, because the seniors are gone, they're gonna still continue educating the freshmen, continue doing good things around the school. Um, the freshman orientation hosted, or held six hundred and twelve freshmen. And under student government things, our Welcome Back Week is gonna be for the, August 14th to the 18th. It's gonna be a lot of stuff. It's gonna be a lot of stuff, a lot of fun stuff. And freshman elections, really big on that one. Hopefully we get a lot of freshmen participating in student government and hopefully throughout the four years of their time at Loda High School. It's gonna start the 15th. Under sports, current junior Sam Barait won first place national pole vault in the Junior Olympics. And Brian Quintero, a senior at Loda High School, 12th place in hammer throwing. That was hosted in Kansas University. Upcoming events would probably be Spirit Week following the rally. And we have yet to decide what we're gonna do for that. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Well, if you'd like, let us know a little bit about yourself, whatever you're comfortable telling us.
Well...
Plans, interests?
Interests, probably, I'm looking towards pathology, forensic pathology. That's giant leap from what I'm at right now. I do want to become a lawyer. That's probably gonna be a big one too. Loda High started their, it's American Civil Order, their class this year, I believe. And I'm in that. Ms. Antonin is teaching that. Really excited for that. Probably after high school, it's probably go to college. I'm probably gonna go to Delta and then probably get a job here at Loda USD helping Ms. Maria Cervantes at Jolson Charter School. Just my old principal, love her.
So do we, so do we.
Yeah, I'll probably be helping there. My mom works there too, so yeah.
Terrific. Well, thank you both. John, you both did a very nice job, very articulate. We appreciate it. Okay, do we have any employee group representatives who'd like to make comments?
No.
Okay. Board members, any comments?
Alright. One of the things that I've tried to emphasize, that I want to emphasize for this year, for next year, is helping our habitually low performing schools. Dr. Wasser's put together some really interesting things on that and I want to say that I think she is, is taking weight on that. Couple of things dawned on me though, that I would like to see us consider as a, as a board as we go on. I've visited some schools already and it's kind of amazing, like the first grade, school's starting at eight o'clock and getting out at 2:05. And then they have a forty minute lunch in there and then they've got fifteen minutes that they have to do every day for PE. And then all of the other transition times and all that kind of, so we really are cutting down the instruction time at those schools. I think one of the things that we ought to consider is establishing a longer day at some of our habitually low performing schools. Now, we just can't do that. Of course, that's gotta be negotiated. But I think that's something that we ought to consider, take a look at the cost and consider it seriously. I'd also like to see us do all day kindergarten at all of our Title I schools. Those kids need a little bit of extra help and I think that would help us out a long way. It'd go a long way in, in helping us reach our goal of all children at grade level by third grade. And the final thing I'd like to see is, I don't want to say this right, preschool, but not the preschool in our traditional sense of it. Having a school to get kids ready for the school year. Every year, start those, start those Title I schools, about four weeks in July, three weeks of... To get them used to school before school starts and give them that little head start. I think if we do some of those things, we can help those low performing schools significantly. Interestingly, I was looking at an old computer this week. I opened it up and I found a spreadsheet in there that I had put together, had the CST scores, those star scores, from 2011, I think it was prior. And you know what was interesting is the same schools that were the lowest there are the lowest now. Which means we haven't made a lot of progress in that. I think that's one of the things we need to do. So I want to bring that up now so that we can talk about that in the future. Up here today, I, oh, another thing is, I want to give our administration and our personnel some compliments. We, as I said, we've got a lot of interns. One school I was at, they had seventeen teachers. We had eight new teachers and six of them were interns. Now, why have we got so many interns? Because there's a teacher shortage in this, in this state. And our people went out and tried to fill those positions. And they recruited those interns. So that is, it's tough that we have six interns at one school, but it's better than having six long-term subs who would change over after thirty days. So, Dr. Wasser, kudos to you and your crew. And Mr. McIllicane, thank you very much for, for that. Whatever you guys did, it is working. And so we wanted to continue to do that. But, Dr. Wasser, you now have six interns handling the school. So now you've got some new challenges there as, as well. Now, the ones that I met, the interns that I met, boy, they are motivated, they're good people. I think everything is gonna be great, but they are new, you know? I mean, they've not even been through the credential program yet. So that's a challenge for you. Went upstairs to the tech center today. If you guys haven't checked that out, you ought to go see it. It's like a first-class call center now. They are tracking all the calls coming in. They know how long people have to be on wait. They're really doing a fantastic job up there. So I would highly recommend that to you. Student reps, welcome to the board meetings. They get a lot of fun, I tell you. Even more fun than this, alright? You're gonna want to come even on the nights you're not up here talking.
I tell them.
Yeah. If it gets, you know, nudge each other to keep yourselves awake, okay? Had an interesting talk with, with Mr. Khan today. I am, please report, I think he's gonna be one heck of an addition to this district. Got a great background, I think he, and he's a techie! My God, he understands technology. So there's another one of us up here now. Anyway, welcome, Mr. Khan. Thank you very much for, for coming to our district. Hope to, that you'll be around for a long time. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President?
Oh, good. Alright. Well, I just wanted to also welcome Mr. Khan. I, last month, I was in on the interview committee and thought he was a great candidate, but more importantly, I was able to share a Costco hamburger meal with him here in the district office in Chateau Breeze for, you know, an hour or whatever and, and that, that was a real test, you know? So I think that Mr. Khan will be a great addition to the district. The other thing I want to mention is that one of my granddaughters starred kindergarten Monday at Julia Morgan in Mrs. Hurstfield's class and as you, some of you might remember, the, when your little one goes up to kindergarten, the only people that are really nervous are the parents. Well, they had a, a program, and I hope it's everywhere, available everywhere, that it's called the CSO program. You know, but she was able, my daughter was able to get a photograph of, of her daughter playing on some of the, the equipment and, but it was just nice to see that they were laughing and playing and, and if that's not available to all of our kindergarten classrooms that opt to be, is great. I mean, it's, it seems like it's pretty simple and I don't, can't imagine it costs them very much, but it sure makes a big difference in the parents' lives. So I think it's a really nice service that the district is offering to our, our parents and our kids.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I too, enjoying my colleagues' statements. Mr. Khan, welcome. Very excited to have you, have you here and definitely appreciate that your presentations, your report items coming up. One slide. So I hope other administrators take advantage of this too. Why use three slides when you can use one? So very good job with that. Student reps, welcome. You are the pulse of the schools and we can't thank you enough for coming here and telling us about what's going on and let us know about your achievements and how it goes and we definitely want to hear about those college applications and we're, we're very, very excited for you, because believe it or not, we all did this once too, so very excited for you. And McNair Eagles, welcome. Thank you very much for coming here tonight. So have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. First of all, again, you know, let's not make it redundancy here, but welcome Leonard. I was in the interview committee with Ron, as two board members and great, great job and I know that you will do an excellent job here for our district. The concerns you had and the experiences that you had before, excellent. Raj, nice job with presentation, good job. Felipe, same thing with you.
Thank you.
And we will see you every other board meeting, as you know, and be, and just report what you've got and if you have anything in athletics that comes up. I know that the board likes to hear all those good, positive things that you guys do in your schools. I want to, I want to thank for the first time, actually, to have the McNair leadership group here. Welcome. It's the first time we've had a leadership at, of a high school attend one of our board meetings. Mark, congratulations on your new job. I know that you will do an excellent job there and you're already presenting some good people here. Hillary, thank you again. Your, your presence is well taken here and very good. I'd like to see a lot more principals here, but anyway, thank you for attending. I'd like to mention that it's tough, George, that toughness on those low performing schools. God, if there was some type of thing that, you know, we're talking about the poverty of the schools, we're talking about the turnover in, in staff teachers. I don't know whether there's a turnover or not, or whether we have a turnover, that could be a factor. There's all kinds of things, the language barrier that they have when they go to those schools, because I know one of them is in my area and, and that's Oak Creek and I know the, the personnel that go to school there. I think that we can improve them, but it's gonna take a monumental task to do this. And I know, Dr. Wasser, you're in the right track and right direction and all the things you have here for us. I want to congratulate on Evate! My gosh! Evate, could you tell us a little bit about Evate? I got on the internet and that's a kind of...
Development platform where teachers will be, actually anybody, will be able to go on their site and select professional development venues and, and topics and be able to complete those on their own, where they want, when they want. We are not requiring anything at this point. We're kind of trying it out to see how it works. There is a digital badge component where they can earn digital badges for what they complete, but we're pretty excited about it. Would I just do a...
Yeah, you did a super job. Thank you, very well. I got on the internet and I was really impressed, because as, as a former teacher, I would explore that possibility, because it's got some really professional development, actually, where you can go and use that. Before I finish, welcome Don again to the grind. Elodia, welcome again and I know the chief over there, Katak, great. I'm glad to see you again and I know you're, got your plate full, but as, as you go and we have these meetings, I know you will disseminate all that information that we need to know and the district needs to know. I'd like to welcome all the new teachers that are out here, but hopefully there are some who are watching. Welcome to them and let's, this is a, a district that is excellent. I mean, just looking at the pictures here and then I have a grandchild that goes to Manolo Silva. My gosh, you couldn't get in the parking lot because of the cars, all those people and the PTA and everything and the classes were tremendous. Again, I want to compliment Mr. Cole over there for his, his great job of opening day of school yesterday and I, like I said, I was around there and took my granddaughter to the school and she is so thrilled to death, to death that she has that, that teacher that she has. I want to thank you.
Mr. Leonard Khan, a very sincere welcome to you. We're so glad to have you on board. And yes, it's wonderful. You're also a techie, so some of us are not. We won't mention any names. So, and some are, but very welcome to you. And Raj and Felipe, I want to thank you for being the leadership of your school. So you're both the presidents, yes?
Yes, correct.
Yes, and you were elected, as we were. And so you're well on your way and, and I'm just, I'm, I'm proud of you for, for doing that and I hope you'll sustain that for your entire life, this leadership role that, that you've taken on. And that goes for McNair. This is great to have McNair here. And so is this, is this the entire leadership of your, of your ASB?
No, we have like about three more leaders.
Okay, the majority?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's the ASB cabinet and the senior officers.
Oh, wonderful, okay. And, and your administrative folks as well, so yeah, thank, thank you so much. And really, our audience is, is leadership and, and teachers and so, so thank you. I was, this is really gonna date me. I'm, I'm a retired teacher, of course, and, but my first presence here at Loda Unified was way back a long, long time ago, 1978, for heaven's sake. I know, yeah. And that's when... You're older than me.
I was born in seventy-seven.
I was just thinking, I wonder how many people out there were born in seventy-seven.
Well, as an extremely young mother, in nineteen seventy-eight, we had just moved to Stockton, to Loda Unified and my oldest child was, was, I won't even tell you what grade she went, because that would really give my age away. But, but it was our first introduction to Loda Unified way back when. And I, I'm so invested in this district, because I really do go all that, that long time ago. It was a great district then. I was the room mother, you know, the mother that, that makes the cupcakes and does all the parties and, and all of that. And then I went on and became a, a teacher for, for the district, which I'm so proud of. But I know this for sure, and that is, it is so much work to start another school year. And so for all of our many schools, all the staff at all of our schools, thank you, thank you for having the door wide open and welcoming for all these kids. I know you were ready to go and the kids are the recipients of all of that, but I know it's a lot of work, so, so thank you so much for that.
Great, thank you.
I can't resist. I must say something when some young kid like that over there talks about age. I have to let you know, nobody on this board even comes close to my age. I was teaching before all of you were born. I want to thank you for being here and spending this time with the Board of Education and also with all of the members from McNair High School. That's super. I think this is one of the best audiences we have ever had. And I want to congratulate you, Mr. Khan, and give you my best wishes for this job. And I say that with a smile, because you do not have an easy job. That is one of the most difficult things in the, in the world, is your job, and I wish you the very best. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everyone. Dr. Wasser, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of board, I just would like to encourage our young leaders here, especially since we have a good group here representing McNair, to really consider taking on the challenge that was posed by Mr. Travolta in the film about random acts of kindness and trying to get a momentum and an effort to spread just little acts here and there of kindness. If there's something you can do at your sites as leaders, as a student body leadership group, to help that effort, some sort of promotion of kindness. I, I would encourage you to think creatively and come up with something that only young people can come up with and make it fun and exciting for our high school campus. I would just ask that you take on that challenge and join us with our effort to promote kindness. Thank you.
Here, here.
Pretty good, thank you, everyone. Next up, we have our report items. Ms. Vedica, you come forward and read all of the... No, please don't.
Oh, come on.
We love your... We love your voice, but that's...
Go ahead.
President Heverly, members of the board, you have a whole list of policies and rules that have been revised, and unless there's any questions, we'll move forward.
Any questions? Quick one. Where did, who wrote the revisions? Where did they come from? Who did the exploration on this?
I did, and they came from the school board, not the school board, the...
CSBA.
CSBA, California State Board Association, from Gambit. I wanted to say Gambit to begin with.
California School Board Association. I'm a delegate on that one.
Yes.
Okay. So you read all this?
I made the changes and the errors that got corrected.
It's a lot of work, thank you very much, that's all I got. Anyone else?
Yeah, I don't wanna extend this too much, but just a little question, Don, on rule 61452, inter-scholastic competition. Are you having a class or a requirement for all these coaches on a concussion type of thing, or how is that handled?
We've been, we've had that in the rule for two or three years now, and they have it in CIF. The ADs go through that, and then they give the coaches classes.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. Next up, we will have the first report from Mr. Khan. Please, go ahead. Two PDFs. Thank you. President Heverly, I'd like to present just the effect of the recently negotiated 2% and 2% raise for LEA. This is only the LEA negotiation as the other groups are in the process of selling. So on this slide, we have the various reserve balances that the district maintains. The 2% deal recently finished up by Mr. McKilligan in the LEA leadership affected two of our balances, our ending balances of contingency, which are the two bars to the left. The first bar is what was originally indicated in the annual budget, and then the red bar slightly to the right of that is current projected ending balance, which is down about $200,000 and some thousand. And then, of course, the far-right two bars, the blue bar represents the position of the actual settlements reserve at annual budget, and then, of course, after the 2% deal was calculated for LEA. This is the effect on our multi-year projections for, in terms of total expenditures for the general fund. So the 2% for LEA takes us up about $5,200,000 the first year, and then a lot of the extra increase of about $170,000 is due to the SIRS and PIRS increases as well. So that, the consistent increase in SIRS and PIRS is bumping up our actual expenditures on a compound basis. Are you happy to take any questions? Or members, any questions? Members of, members of the audience, any questions? Okay, did you have any? Oh, okay. All righty. Our next two reports, or our next report, I'll show you two slides. Sorry, Mr. President. The first, this is actually a report on how nothing has changed, although as my new great friend Raj will learn when he's doing his investment case studies at Harvard Business, the path to profit lies between the difference between perception and reality. So our current perception is that STIRS and PIRS are not only increasing on this timeline, and this slide was presented to board at annual budget, but also there's underlying this as the fear that it could get worse. If we can look at the next slide, this is why the world fears it could get worse. In its simplistic form, what CalPERS and CalSTRS pays its retirees is predicated or calculated on what employees pay in, what employers pay in, and then, of course, what the investment portfolio returns. The issue that's confronted the state is that the investment portfolio has been yielding at times under 1% per annum. However, the good news in this, the reality, is that investment returns increased dramatically in the last investment portfolio year. So CalSTRS reported a 13.4% increase, CalPERS 11.2. That brings the 10-year average, averages, investment return respectively, to 5% and 4%. Now, again, it's not gonna change the current projected cost of PIRS and STIRS on this district or any other district's portfolio, however, this fear that it could get worse may actually be dwindling, just because the actual annual returns are starting to normalize a little higher than what was feared in the past. So it's not good news yet, but it may be the end of the fear of more bad news. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
So what you're saying is it's not getting any better, we're gonna continue to go to grow to about the 22%?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you don't see it becoming worse than that?
Actually, I don't. The 20-year returns, I think, are 6.9% and 6.6% for STIRS and PIRS respectively, and currently, what the pensions call the discount rate, which is their stated reinvestment rate, is marked at 7. So when the pensions first addressed that, the discount rate was 7.5. So lowering it a half a point required all this additional payment by, and it also includes the actuarials of what are effect people like myself, baby boomers, moving into retirement. But that movement of half percent was one of the issues that predicated this massive increase in employer costs. So if we're getting close to their bogey, so to speak, maybe we have less of fear in terms of at least an escalation in employer costs.
Again, if it's going any higher than it's already projected to go, and we're not as high as it's projected to go yet.
No, sir. So that trajectory on the first slide, it was from the annual budget report, is status quo. It's... Do you see any lifting or lightening of the restrictions that previous California legislative bodies and the current, in what PIRS and STIRS can invest in? I don't. It's, pension investment is highly regulated. To reach for more volatile asset classes is very difficult. It's just an opinion, but I think it would be very difficult. Very good. Anyone else? Members of the audience? Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. It's fun talking money, right? All righty, and that was both your reports. Yes, sir. Okay. All right, are there any board advisory committee reports? Are there any board members want to suggest future agenda items?
Oh, come on!
I see no future agenda items. What's the next thing on the... We will not be going back into closed session, and I hear a meeting to... Wait a second. Well, I guess it's meeting the chairs.
That was fun. Good luck this year. Thanks, very much, Mark. That was nice to have them here. I know. Yeah, you're all very... You can read it and figure it out on your own. Thank you very much. I don't wanna... No, sir. But I didn't cross paths with you. No, it's good. We had it last year, and that way during the day I get to... I mean, sometimes it's... I don't know if the high school... I will let Michelle know, that's way beyond the screen.